Six o'clock, I'm gonna call the regular select board meeting to order. First thing is set adjusted agenda.
We need that.
I have them.
Bunch that we're taking off?
No. Add an item eight, select board to consider authorization of an application for community services grant of $5,000 from the Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District.
Wait, wait, wait.
Add an item number nine.
Wait, wait, wait.
That was number eight?
Yeah.
Solid Waste District Grant, NSP Grant.
Okay.
Number, add an item nine, select board to discuss the revised price for the Caspian Avenue tax sale property. And add an executive session pursuant to one VSA 313 for a legal matter.
Which the last one was my fault.
Sorry, and then executive, we're adding.
Legal matter? Yeah.
What was the number for that Casey?
It's the one VSA 313.
Please kill me.
So, I can, are there any other additions?
That's it.
I can motion to add an item number eight, community service solid waste district grant, and number nine, Caspian Avenue tax sale adjustment, and an executive session for one.
Second.
Any other changes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, we have an adjusted agenda. Next, communication from the audience.
That's why I was right on time, I was trying to find the audience.
Trying to find the audience, but you couldn't, could you?
Should be out in the streets, come here.
Alright.
That was upstairs.
Yeah.
Maple syrup and brown.
Select board, next is select board to approve minutes, we had two, we have our regular minutes from our regular meeting on March 16th, and we had a special meeting on March 23rd.
Hope to approve minutes for both meetings.
Second?
Any comments or questions, clarifications on the minutes? I thought they looked good. Thank you to people taking notes. All in favor of accepting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, we'll sign those. Next, town manager report given by David Upson Jr.
So first of all, I just wanna say that we have a, the baseball team had a scrimmage today down at Blue Mountain. It's going on right now. This is the first time they've been outside this year. Ben Paxton in the gym, so good luck to them. Fire station roof, we had some leaking going on this spring. We will be putting out that, putting that work out for bid. The question for the board is standing seam or asphalt? After July 1, we will have over 50,000 to work with in the building's capital. I don't think that's gonna cover a standing seam roof.
Is that 50,000 for the entire building's capital, or just for that building?
Yes, that's the, that's what we have in the bank.
That's for that building.
Yeah.
So they're saying that.
Oh, for that building.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ever since Mary, they'll put them on.
Right.
That's a good long time for shingles.
So that's probably 20 years.
Shingles are 20 years.
Yeah, it's been 30 years probably. Cause bum was working, Bagley and bum were working.
Well, that's what we were wondering if bum was still working for them then.
Yeah, Bagley and bum, when they did that.
And if we're thinking about moving the fire station, it seems.
Someday.
I don't know, realistically, the next 20 years.
Yeah, realistically, 20 years.
Well, you can get quotes for both and come back to us.
So, structurally that.
What about waiting?
Structurally, that thing has made, had major issues, it's been repaired. I gotta believe it still has major issues. I mean, all we did is repair it, it wasn't, you know. So my only question would be to wait.
Weight load.
If it's a difference.
But it wouldn't, so.
But asphalt's heavier, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that's why it collapsed.
That's why it's collapsed. It's got asphalt on it now.
Yeah, and standing seam, it might, the snow might slide off.
You're talking standing seam or just metal?
Right.
No, I'm talking standing seam.
The roof design way back was for metal. And at the time, Ronnie wanted to replace it with standing seam. Because, just because of the pitch of the roof, the metal that was on there was, you know, very low, and it was weak, wicked, and you're like a stiff. But then the site board said, no, it costs too much. So by the time all the roof collapsed and caved in, by the time they ended up pushing stuff up, it was cheaper to do standing seam back then.
It would've been cheaper.
It would've been, yes. Yeah, cause now we have two steel eye beams inside.
Yeah, it was a major.
Had to push the floor back up. Then you had to sister, I think just about every trust in here with two, two A12s.
I didn't see it.
Cause they all stand.
It was a major.
Wow.
So more to come on that, I'm gonna get quotes for both.
I think there's gonna be substantial price difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had you too.
I, you know, I was talking to Mike Rocho about it, and he figured, not without labor, he figures just this metal itself would probably be somewhere around 30, 35.
Wow.
That's the local price.
Yeah, well, yeah. For what he's been doing for roofs and stuff, you know, for what he's been doing, so yeah.
So you have to figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought this was my report.
It is. I'm just chiming in like you usually cut in on me.
So, Better Connections Grant, as many of you watched or read on WCX, the town was awarded close to $68,000 in the Better Connections Program, with an option for another $30,000 for a clean water project through the Agency of Natural Resources. We will work with the community and consultants to develop a master plan for East Hardwick Village. A completed master plan will open up additional grant opportunities to complete projects identified in the plan. In order for this program to work the way it was designed, we will need input from residents through a series of public forums over the course of the project. So this is, this is a great thing for East Hardwick Village, because they're a designated village center. We get this master plan in place, we can look for more grant funds to be able to do more projects there. Long overdue.
So, sorry if I'm.
You're fine.
Confused, but, so is the grant to help us do that master plan?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll hire someone?
Yeah.
Okay, good, perfect.
Yep, and it's, and it's also gonna, we need to pull out community input.
Yeah, all good.
And there's, I think there's a ton of community input in East Hardwick that we, we wanna pull out. So this is, this is gonna be great. We received one bid for the Memorial Building Roof Project here for repair and the slate, for $10,503.
Have we got a grant for?
We have, that's a preservation trust grant, or historic preservation grant.
We have the Division for Historic Preservation.
So we'll just, we'll either need to, I wanna, we, the one bid that we got, I wanna just check the references, cause it's a fairly new company. It's not an overly complicated project, so, but we definitely.
Will it, is it just the slate, are we also gonna paint the trim?
Some flashing, no, the paint isn't on there, but that wasn't part of the RFP.
Okay, at some point, the trim is.
The trim and those little windows too.
Yeah, looking a little bit rough.
And then that would be like the next step to do like a window thing. Window, yeah.
Yeah.
Or just finish the window project that got started a long time ago.
Sure.
And complete the windows and stuff.
Well, there were, there were storm windows installed, some of those lower, yeah.
They didn't, the whole project didn't get that.
But even the storm windows are a little fee. So this is for, more for future conversation, but I wanna put this out there on your radar. Jackie Casino of Vtrans has reached out with a proposal to further develop the property near the S-Curve on Route 15, near where the bridge is up there. That's laid on the ground. The proposal request, if, if we decide, yes, this is a trailhead, we wanna use this as a trailhead, and they provide signage, like they're providing signage here, we could, we would take over the routine maintenance, including like trash pickup and winter plow, if we wanna make it a year-round travel.
Where does she have, where specifically is she suggesting?
So, you know, if you're headed out of town on Route 15, right before you get to the first nasty corner, there's a pull-off.
On the left.
On the left, right there.
Okay.
And there's access to the trail.
People use it for like a parking ride.
Yeah.
It's also, people use it for dumping trash.
They do.
Yeah, it's a.
People dump tires and furniture and stuff there.
It's, it's easy access to the LBRT, it's easy access to the river. I don't know.
Is it safe?
That, the sightlines coming out of there are tricky.
Yeah.
I think it's used locally, I just, I don't know if this is the best.
Is this something she thinks she'd like to see happen for the rail trail, or is she just floating the idea?
I think it's more of a floating the idea, like they're going along the trail and seeing what properties are available.
So is that?
But this wasn't identified in our.
Well, it's not the ones we're talking about though.
Oh, yeah, the access point there?
And within that.
We're also considering what's gonna happen.
So in that request was, what do we wanna do with Wright Farm Road? Do we wanna make that a year-round trailhead? Or just keep it to, as a local vast location for people to use?
Well, it's actually a vast trailhead, the vast is the one, and we have permission to do it. I was assured, I was assured it was gonna stay a trailhead throughout the Yellow Bear Project.
But it should also just be general parking down there too.
It is.
Yeah, people.
But it should be a little bit improved.
It could be.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's not mine.
I know, but I'm saying.
I can tell you all the improvements that have been made there, I've done.
Right.
So, there was.
No, I'm not saying it's bad, but it could be, there could be a little more parking, a little more gravel down there.
There sure they could be, and the town gave the gravel, I did the.
Oh, really? Okay.
I think, my opinion, which if it matters, we have this consortium grant to identify trailheads along in Hardwick, and we have the ability to identify two trailheads, believe that.
We have identified two.
And we have identified two, and I'd like to see, I'd like to see that information come forward, however, it's 15 months out. Yeah, they said 18 months, right?
Wow.
The grant is.
No, the.
The actual, like the results.
Oh.
So I think people are gonna use both of those locations to access the LBRT.
Is there any harm in just having some basic signage there to just like, cause people use it anyway?
Yeah.
People park here no matter what, like, could we do bare minimum to just?
So who, the question is who provides the signage? And if somebody puts signage up, then it's kind of like we're on the hook.
Who's gonna take care of the trash?
So, I guess I'm, I'm confused, I thought that that land that we're talking about in the S-turns was state.
It is.
And the state also, so the state through Vtrans also has the rail, which has the LBRT on it.
Correct.
So why don't they just do it?
They wanna.
Cause they don't wanna take care of it.
But why don't they take care of it?
Cause they're not gonna take care of any of the rail trails.
I can, I can send Jackie that question in, in the form of an email, cause I told her we'd have a meeting tonight.
I mean, what are other, like, that would be my first question, like, you own it, you own the rail trail, why don't you just make it a trailhead?
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Because they don't wanna maintain it.
Yeah.
They don't wanna have to maintain it.
Why don't they wanna make, I, I think it's worth asking the question.
Yep, I agree.
Well, then maintain.
Cherry just gave me the answer.
They maintain the parking area by moose head.
Do they call that, what do they call it?
Uh, moose head, I think.
Yeah.
They maintain that, they plow that out, and that'll go over there.
Well, it would be easier for their trucks to plow it, cause it's on the highway.
They're plowing by there anyway.
It would be a pain for us to drive up to just.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I.
Are you noticing the silence here?
I'd love it if you would ask the question.
Yeah, thanks.
You can say the select board wants to know.
Yeah, 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 of course.
Everybody but Danny, cause he already knows.
Cherry, I think we all already know, I just want, I just wanna ask the question. Yep, I wanted to say it.
Or you don't wanna do that?
I wanted to say it.
I wasn't, I didn't, it's just the money to do.
Alright.
You have a good man.
Where are we at?
Those are really good.
The last bullet, one of my three week managers report. Sludge, 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 due to the ongoing.
Three bullets.
P fast crisis. We are scrambling to find a location to dispose of our dewatered sludge from the lagoon one. We currently have two potential locations, one is far away and more costly, and the other is not available until July, which doesn't work with our timelines. We have another round of sludge testing, and are crossing our fingers that Englob and Quebec will open back up in early summer for composting, which is the most cost effective of this going.
So you had said like a, a possible, somebody had suggested that a possible backup plan was to pump all the sludge into the lagoon we just cleaned out.
Correct.
Which doesn't sound very appealing to me, because you just cleaned it out.
Correct.
So, are you saying now that it looks like, even, there might be a cost, a price penalty, but it looks like we'll be able to ship it off-site?
Yeah, but it's far away.
Which costs more.
It's on the other side of New York, it's in Seneca Meadows, New York, that's near Rochester, so it's six hours.
One way.
Yeah, and so we just did some sludge searches in the lagoon to see where we're at with sludge, and we're gonna crunch some numbers and to see how far over budget we would be on that lagoon cleanout.
And then meanwhile, you're monitoring to see if someone in Quebec opens up.
Right, so we're just, we're on a kind of a time crunch for the upgrade, because they wanna get started, and once we start that clock, then we have to keep moving.
Yeah.
So we're trying to not delay, but we're just trying to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row, and I think we're good until the very latest end of May, before we start. We'll have to drop the lagoon levels mid-May to prepare for June.
Okay.
Cleanout, so I'm hoping to have an answer soon. So that's what's going on, I mean, there's a lot of other stuff going on, but those are the big ones. And unofficially, but officially, we got another $200,000 for the bridge.
Wow.
Yep, that came out yesterday.
From?
The Department of Transportation grant that we wrote.
Nice.
Which was only available.
Because we're designated downtown.
Wow.
So within two months of becoming a designated downtown, which I'll remind you, I've been working on since 2014.
That seems longer than that.
Yes, it does. Within two months, we.
It took you that long to get it?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Don't stir the pot.
I'm just kidding.
Alrighty, sweating.
You did good, you did good.
Alright.
So, yeah, so we have our bridge funding, hopefully.
That, I think that would bring us up pretty close to full.
When we build in the bridge?
Soon. We're trucking, we're trucking away.
We made all the decisions, right? We're good to.
We got some stuff that we need to check out the list.
Are we still waiting on engineering?
There are some holdups, yeah.
On the, on the abutments?
No, really, the holdups are being able.
Be related to paperwork.
Keep being able to move forward with USDA feeling comfortable enough to move forward, but with what we have and don't have. It's, it's kind of an unorthodox project, like if we would go out to bid, and a contractor would purchase the bridge, and in this situation, we're purchasing the bridge.
Oh.
The town is purchasing the bridge. So it's, we need to get this section 106 done, which is.
Okay, so there's stuff to do.
Yeah.
The timeline is messed up and.
Next summer.
Now it might not happen in the fall.
Really?
If it doesn't, if things don't fall together really soon.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, it's that thing.
Yikes.
Your accuracy.
Welcome to Vermont.
Yeah.
We'll stun you, federal, bypass the whole state stuff, and just do it.
It's, this is the federal government.
Yeah.
They got the money.
The trouble is, yeah, they're, they got the money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, that's my report, I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, thank you.
It's all false.
Next up, Tom Fadden, give us the road report.
Roads are great right now, full potholes, but that's it. We've had a couple soft spots, but overall, I think they are really good this year. Of course, Dave had to twist my arm, so I had to go up and grade his road first.
Man, it was rough.
Not true.
Was it?
Not true.
So anyway, so we got West Hill graded, parts of bunker we did, except for where it was very wet, and that was last week. You know, grade stuff in between, what we hadn't been trying to grade through.
We graded a couple weeks ago with a plow.
Yeah, yeah, we did that too. Today, we ended up fixing the spot on Montgomery, with just a little bit of stone up on farther end. It weren't bad, but it was a little bit rutty, but we know why it was. Couple places on Bailey Haven Road, and then earlier this morning, and then like mid-morning, we started rolling them over. So we started up on Dimick Road, worked our way over to Mountain View and Ward Hill. Tomorrow, I think they're either going Hopkins Way or Bridgman Way, that way, then if the weather's true, to what it's supposed to be. We should have pretty well all the main drags and everything done by next week, if it holds up. So everything should be in pretty good shape by the end of next, next week. We started cleaning up the intersections, you know, the aprons, down by Marsh Road, washing them down, south and straight through. So we're working our way back in town, we'll be going out to Magdale, and then doing the bridges and stuff like that, getting those washed down. The guys got off all the wings out of the trucks, I ain't gonna use them no more. I took, cleaned out my truck today, took the wing off, put the chloride tank in there, so, cause I know next week if it's good, we're gonna soak the living heck out of them.
Good.
So we should go outside of that, then, oh, probably starting Monday, we're going down to Village, starting scraping down some of the heavier set dirt and stuff, then we'll start using our own sweeper itself. I know Casey's got the email back guy for the street sweeper, first choice was the week of May 8, and then the next two weeks after that, so whichever one, one we get, so we'll go from there.
Great.
Very little problems with the sewer, liftations and stuff.
And then we'll put it out there now, and the next meeting, now we're gonna be flushing hydrants, so last week.
Last weekend, yes, last week in April. And the, and on that week too, we got an M-shock class over in Byron we have to go through, so.
At what class?
M-shock. It's in a lot of pits now, they're not allowing you to permit to go into their pits without going through this class.
Oh, really?
So, yeah.
Definitely can't, why they run equipment in there without having an M-shock.
Great, y'all, good to go. You guys are scheduling the vacations.
And I'm wondering if we use, I know the notification, I don't wanna abuse the emergency notification email thing for the water. But for the water, but I'm debating on whether to do an announcement for the hydrant flushing. I think it would be appropriate, but.
I think it would be.
I just don't want that email to be over the top.
Well, it could be, it could be a test, I mean.
See what we get for feedback.
You should, we should be using it once or twice a year, regardless of whether it's just a test or, I think it's a great test, you know, a great, great use, just make, see what happens.
I'm happy to get those emails.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, you could explain that in email, right? You could say that this is also serving as a.
Maybe it shouldn't be called the emergency.
Maybe get feedback.
Well, it's, it's just a notification, yeah, you're right.
We didn't call.
I just don't wanna abuse it, you know, because if you do it too much, then people overlook.
I don't think, it's not too much, I don't think.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
It's why I didn't sign up. I have signed up for those things and get inundated and just thought, you know, I've got other ways to find it out.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're ready to get your teeth in the water.
Alright, next up is.
We're brown and virgin, now.
Next up is Hardwick Police Department report given by Police Chief Mike Henry.
So, just letting off, about three weeks ago, the West Hill, where Peter went down for us, so we lost communication. We've been having internet problems with it for the last year, and, you know, trying to diagnose it, well, this turned into a catastrophic failure, and I had brought the communications go up there, they looked at it, they pulled it apart, it was, turned out that it was a station control module that went bad, it was a hamster in there that basically melted down, and initially, when I talked to them, they were looking at, to repair it was gonna be $2,500 to $3,000. It's a 10-year-old system, I got a rough ballpark figure of 12 grand to put in, this is, yeah, it's 10-year-old system, ballpark figure of 12 grand to put into a system, and so we were trying to find some funding for that. In the meantime, we came up with a used control module that they were able to put in there, and they have it up and running now. So, all in all, I mean, this cost us about a thousand bucks, but I could see putting money into a 10-year-old electronic system, not much money into it. So we were debating on trying to come up with the money and start all over, but it's working really well now. Guys, they just got it done today, guys have been out testing it, again, they think maybe that control module has been going, and that's why we had an internet problem. So, finish costs, so that'll be good. The vast still we have drawn, I think we're done now, but I just put together some stats from it, I think, I think it was a good thing. I thought I had five, but there's only four there, I wish it was pretty good. So just what you get, some of the numbers there, what we did, I just handed mine, let's see what they are, but, you know, I just put, we covered some 174 miles of the vast trail while we were out there. Total hours on the trail was 163 hours. We ended up doing 89 checkpoints during that time, and wrote nine tickets in 42 mornings. So that's kind of what we did for the vast trail, that was all covered by mass as well, so it covered.
Covered as in paid for?
Paid for.
Paid for.
Paid for. So we got extra patrol here in Hardwick, and surrounding towns as well, went out, but majority of the time spent there in Hardwick with that. The other thing, I just kind of put together just first quarter report, just kind of looking at what we've done at the office so far. We've covered, you know, 574 incidents, 61 resulted in criminal charges, most of those have gone to the Restorative Justice Center. But, and again, I messed up. Those are the arrests, and what type arrests that were out there.
Are we Restorative Justice, is that a St. J now?
We have it out of our office.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
But it's, it is out of St. J, it's, they, they have a Hardwick.
A satellite?
Satellite. Mike Melnick is the representative now, he's new, he just came here in January, we did have somebody else here, but when two partner left, Mike is a resident in the area, so it works out good. We're trying to work with Restorative Justice to kind of have them do community service time here in Hardwick. That's kind of the goal, Tom's agreed to help out with that, get people work, what we got, work down the sewer plan as well. So it's just trying to get the right person, the right person here.
Great.
Mike, this is the first time that you've done this rail trail.
Yes.
How do these numbers compare to what you in the back of your head thought was probably gonna be the situation?
As far as numbers, as far as like.
The, the kind of incidents, the kind of.
You've talked about the vast.
The vast, yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's about normal. I've done the vast trail through state police, and we actually spent more time on the trail because, because our chute was right here on the trail. So a lot of the time, the travel time, getting to the trailhead or wherever, you know, you might have an eight-hour day, but you may only quit four or five hours maybe on the trail, where we were able to be out on the trail a lot more. The inspections were up, I think word was out there that we were there, so I think that, you know, we didn't have the serious violations that have been going on around here in the past, and it's not just the rail trail that we covered, it was all the vast trail.
It met, but did not exceed your expectations.
Exceed as far as.
Just more, more trouble, more.
It was manageable.
Yeah, it was manageable, you know, you're always gonna have, you know, a couple complaints here or there, but I think for the most part, you know, getting out there, having the presence out there, you know, one of the big things is speed, and it's also some of the loud machines that are out there, so they have the aftermarket exhaust, so once word got out there, I think people were steering clear.
Mike, it's great, it's awesome to have the quarterly report, maybe for the next quarter it would be, I know it's, it's just the first quarter, it would just be helpful to have like a.
Comparison.
Comparison, or like this is, maybe it's just like this is something that is new that we got, you know, I don't, like, I don't know enough about the history of the arrests that we have, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like a lot, which is good, but I also like don't have the, it would just be a reference point, or maybe it's something like theft is up by two, or whatever, I don't know, you know, that kind of thing would be, would be great.
It's not a benchmark.
What's that? We have revenue, are you doing the, Casey, are you presenting the revenues?
Yeah, later.
Please do. Some of that will be in there.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
The timing's great.
Not a historical thing, but just like where we're at.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't even have to be like a big thing, it can just be like, we've noticed from these numbers, like a couple things are low or a couple things are higher. Would be, would be.
Trends.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I totally agree and it'd be awesome if you could do that, I just would caution us all that the numbers are so small, the things that look like trends.
Right, right.
May not be trends.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't even have to be the numbers, it can just be you saying like, this is something we've noticed, which I think you're really good at doing.
Yeah, I think he's done that.
Yeah.
So, just, it's.
Yeah.
So, uh reading on there, one of the other things I wanted to talk about was uh starting uh the children's advocacy centers that are around, uh one was in Saint J, one was in Hyde Park. They're a little bit too far for us, they don't really get utilized all that much, uh what they're meant for is interviewing victims of uh, you know, domestic sexual assault. Uh mainly children uh under the age of eighteen. Uh so, it's difficult for us because uh the DCF comes from uh Morrisville. Uh and then sometimes victim advocate comes from Saint J or vice versa. So, what we've decided to do is to have basically a satellite uh CAC here in Hardwick. We have a senior center, we found the perfect room right there, uh the CAC cannot be, you can't be bringing victims in through a police office. So the fact that we have that senior center and we can come around from that side, uh that would put some compliance with that. So, I don't think it'll cost much to uh get this going, um all of this is throwing some carpet down, throwing some paint, we got the paint there.
One of the, uh, one of the smaller rooms?
Yep, one of the smaller rooms that are there.
On the right, like the old offices.
In the back. So, in the back, reception area, there's an office.
Yep.
It was, it was a storage closet, it had all the chairs from the uh library, they've been stored in there, so just pull those out, uh put some carpet down, you know, make it kid-friendly, that type of thing. Um we hope it doesn't get utilized all that much, but you, you know.
It's important to have it.
It's important to have it there.
So where does it coordinate with that? Where does it help with that at all?
Where does it help?
Oh, where?
Oh, uh not necessarily where, um it would be uh, so the way we gotta work right now is that the CAC in Saint Johnsbury would send an advocate down to work with us. Um we have uh myself and Paul Bernard are forensic child interviewers, so we would be able to do the cases right there, um start them and then work from that point. So, also DCF, I would keep it open for them to utilize as well, uh again, we're just trying to.
It's basically just a secure place that isn't with it in the police department.
Right.
It also, if we go through, incorrect if I'm wrong, but if we go through the Child Advocacy Center, the investigations are covered by the Child Advocacy Grant.
We're working on that.
And if we can have a satellite office and do the, do the investigations here in Hardwick with that facility, then we can do those investigations and have them be paid for by that grant.
Right.
That's down, that's in the works.
That's in the works, there's, there's a lot of strings attached to that money, which we've, we've had in the past. What they've always wanted is us to assign a detective, they wanted that detective to go out and go into other towns and work as well, whenever there's a case there, which has been difficult. And then also having to report back to Saint Johnsbury uh and go to meetings there, you know, wait for meetings, that type of stuff. It's just, there's a lot of strings and I don't think the town can afford that, you know, uh for the amount of money they're gonna give you. It's like, I mean, it's to a quarter of what it would cost to put it back in the deposition.
I'll keep working on it.
But it sounds like this room, in the event that you do have a local victim, it's, it seems to me it would be less traumatic to just bring them into a place in Hardwick. Rather than bringing them, you know, partway across the state, trying to make them relaxed.
Yeah, we've had to do that, you know, in one case particularly, we had to go all the way to Mary. You know, just because of where the person's at and services and everything else, so, um yeah, I think that'll.
Yeah, that would be good.
One of them, now that it's warming up, I, I'm gonna try to look for some grants or, uh I'm thinking e-bikes.
I think e-bikes are a great idea.
Yeah, I think so, so if anybody has any, you know, uh I'm looking for some feedback here, if anybody has any ideas on grants or anything like that to get uh two e-bikes for the police department.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Yeah. Yeah, I'll think about.
Yeah. I knew somebody would.
Are you gonna?
The wheels would be turning.
Are you gonna patrol, or L B R T with that?
What's that, yes.
Poop patrol, dog, dog poop patrol? Horse poop.
Running over it?
No, make sure they clean it up.
I think also just for downtown Hardwick, it would be a really expedient way to be like.
Well, they had bikes before, right? You got bikes, but it's not e-bikes.
Well, Hardwick's pretty hilly, you could scoot back.
Back in the day when officers used to be physically fit.
I think they should be pedaling, I don't think they should be.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Paul Bernard was out there tonight.
Yeah, he was.
Really? Nice.
Good day.
Early adopter.
Oh, man.
It's early in the year.
Yeah, it was nice, he said, it's a good day, good day to even have.
Yeah, it was nice.
Do you, do your e-bikes have to be tricked out in a way that pedestrian e-bikes don't have to?
But they wouldn't be governors. You could go a hundred miles an hour and something like that.
They put their baseball cards in the wheels, I can hear you coming.
I like it.
You look too, too hard? Basket?
No, like bar, we're not, we're not stopping people. No motor vehicle stops.
So, so if somebody got one and was disappointed with it or for whatever reason couldn't use it, could they donate it to the police department?
Absolutely, yeah.
Boy, I should check with Phil though.
Or they could donate it to the town interviewers office.
Maybe he's got some rental.
Maybe not Monday through Friday.
Sounds like the wheels are turning.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to do, get the wheels turning.
Yeah.
And that's all I got.
All right, thank you.
Now you guys can get on with the rest of you.
All right, we're gonna move on. Next, uh the moment that uh Tanya has been waiting for, the select board to consider approval of several liquor licenses, this item one. Um and they are.
Liquor and tobacco.
Liquor and tobacco, and they are, what are they, Walgreens and DG Retail LLC doing business to Dollar General? And then Walgreens again for tobacco, oh, those first two were second.
Make a motion that we uh approve the requests for Walgreens and Dollar General for class, second-class liquor license and Walgreens Eastern for tobacco license.
Second?
Any discussion?
Are you, any problems with any of these?
Nope, says her bottom.
She wrote on the bottom, we don't. Thank you, so um.
Thanks, Tonya.
Thank.
All in favor, so approving these, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Tanya.
Thank you.
Thanks, next is, uh, next is item two, select board to consider approval of a three-year I B E W contract for Highway Department Collective Bargaining Unit.
This was in our folder.
The contract was in our online folder. And I did read it and I thought I had one question, but now I don't remember what it was, it was minor anyway.
I can motion to approve the three-year I B E W contract for the Highway Department Collective Bargaining Unit.
Second?
authorize me to sign it.
And I can authorize our town manager to sign it.
And, and whiz offers the second. Uh any questions about the contract? It's uh, you know, as budgeted for essentially, right?
Um no, there's a little bit of a problem with that, um I didn't communicate with our business manager in the final moments of some of the um, the negotiations. So we, we have, we're gonna be over budget in labor for the first year because we went the opposite direction of the increases.
Switched them.
We switched them last minute. So there's gonna be a little bit of a hiccup for FYI twenty-four.
Okay.
For us, and that's my fault.
Within our regular margin of error kind of hiccup, or it's kind of blows out of the water?
Two percent of the salaries, probably like ten grand or something.
Yeah.
Oh, that's within.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Regular fluctuations.
I know about it, because I was.
I'm sure we can make it up in other areas within highway, but yeah, it's just.
I see.
Yeah.
That was my fault.
Okay, but it's, it's gonna be within.
He's taking the bullet.
Yeah.
But it's gonna be within our, I mean.
Yeah.
This was my first round of contract negotiations and.
You did great.
I will, I've learned from it and hopefully I can be around for the next round.
Yeah.
Of contract negotiations, but um.
Hopefully you didn't learn too much, because you'll be negotiating yours.
No, I'm not like that, but, so yeah, there's just that little tiny.
Yeah, but that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good, so, uh any other questions about? All in favor uh of approving and having the town manager sign the labor contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thanks for working on that and thanks to our Highway Department, I just wanted to offer a shout-out that. Our roads have been good, appreciate all the work through the winter and then upcoming through the summer and appreciate that we have a dedicated crew here all the time.
They have great attitudes, they come, they show up, they do the work.
It's a good thing.
Yeah.
And then take comp time, you know, they.
Not a lot of people know how, what a big favor.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually a huge favor.
It's huge.
Yeah.
As long as it works out for everybody.
Right.
Right.
All right, so next up, item three, select board to discuss next steps for the gravel pit purchase.
So.
What are our next steps?
The next steps are to finalize the purchase and sales, we met with Kenny on Monday, talked to him about the leased area. Um for the topsoil and we're gonna do a separate lease outside of the purchase and sales after the closing.
So he's gonna lease back a certain area where he's got stock, uh topsoil, stockpiled?
For ten years.
Why, I have hard times seeing that, okay.
Um and then there is a um telecommunications easement option. Um that we're gonna have a, that's gonna be an area where along the border of the property for the construction of a road if. And only if there was um an erection of a tower. Um if, e- either on that side of the road, but most likely, or there's a fifty-fifty chance it could be on the other side of the road too, not on the gravel pit property. Um that'll all be outlined in the purchase and sales, um which we're hoping to finalize by the end of April.
So would that easement last? How long does that last?
Uh that'd be for the lifetime of the seller and then it would revert to the town.
Seems like a long time. Anyway.
Well, Kenny's. Seven of you.
Okay.
Hey, download.
All right, all right, sounds good, um what else do we have for, so you're working on purchase and sale?
Working on finalizing all that and then we hope to have um.
Bond application is due by May fifteenth and then that closes like at the end of July or August, um if we need to close before that, we can just fund it and get reimbursed with bond proceeds. And I think the biggest thing was all of the talk at town meeting about using some fund balance, um and where the select board was thinking about that. If we're moving forward with the five hundred, or are we gonna try to take a little bit and reduce that, what, I guess that was one of the biggest questions, because it, there was a lot of talk about that at town meeting.
Right.
But the bond vote passed.
Right, so up to five hundred, correct?
Correct, up to five hundred.
Maybe it makes sense too, since we just got that um grant for the bridge, maybe at our next meeting we can look at, well, well, we talked at our last meeting about what we had available and the fund balance, but um. Maybe, maybe we can look at like the rates and the, right before we put the application in, what the total cost over time is going to be for that.
Right, but, so someone, I don't remember who spoke up about, we, if we to use our, our money now.
Lincoln England brought that up.
Lincoln England, we use our money now that we have saved to pay for this thing? Then the people that are getting sand in twenty years are getting free sand, they're not paying for their sand. You see what I'm saying, and what the bond vote does is it makes people pay, taxpayers pay every year for their sand, just like they were budgeting it in their budget if you were buying it.
Right.
But if we, if we take money out of our savings account, basically, and pay for it, we're basically gifting them free sand. Which is a, you know, a great concept, but I don't wanna do it.
So, um I think, I think it's a perfectly valid point of view, I think it's also valid to say, why pay a lot of interest if you could avoid? And so I wonder if maybe.
They're gonna pay interest, it don't matter what.
Right, but, but I don't know, I think it might be worth looking at something in the mid, like if, I'd be interested to see.
Like thirty, seventy or sixty-five?
Not even, like what if we, I mean, what if, what if we could put in a hundred thousand from the fund balance, would that make sense, or would that not make sense?
We work so hard to try to reach the recommended percentage.
Yes.
The only reason that fund is grew the way it did is because of COVID and shit weren't getting done. You didn't spend money, the budget, it was budgeted money that wasn't spent. It wasn't, we've saved money because we did hell of a job or labor or anything, it was money that wasn't spent, it was, it was.
That's how it was built.
It was budgeted to be spent, circumstances didn't allow it to be spent, the, the work didn't get done, so that went into the surplus. So, I just, and, and we've spent it about seven different ways from what I can see anyway. We spent two hundred million and we only got two hundred thousand, so every time we talk about giving more money, we don't have a big fund balance, do we, that's uncommitted?
We're gonna be around seven hundred and sixty thousand.
Uncommitted, no commitment for that whatsoever.
Correct.
And what's the recommended?
Between fifteen and twenty percent.
Which is?
Uh fifteen percent is a goal, but I think it says a minimum of ten.
You're right, so what's fifteen percent?
Ten, fifteen, yeah.
What's fifteen percent?
Um well, three seventy-four, three hundred, three point seven million, so three seventy and, and if you're able to do this, one fifty, one eighty-five.
What do you got, Tom?
About five hundred thousand, fifteen percent.
Five fifteen, five fifteen, yeah.
So it's not like we have.
Masses.
Masses of money.
We don't, and we.
Considering if one thing goes wrong, you drop a hundred thousand dollars in a heartbeat.
Uh we've passed this bomb, we had it, we, it passed almost two to one, we have some big things coming.
What if the sewer, what are we gonna do with our sewer sludge ones?
That's in.
I mean.
It, that doesn't, it's nothing, we can't do anything with this, with these funds, it's enterprise fund.
That's a different fund.
But I also, I also.
But there's also the town garage project that we hope to see coming down the pike and there's not a lot of grant money for that sort of thing, so that's potentially another bond vote. So, you know, maybe that would be the thing, it hasn't happened yet, so why would we mess with the bond vote that passed?
We wouldn't mess with the vote.
So, I think the, the.
Just meant we tied the last.
Yeah, and the.
The taxpayer said spend, spend the money.
Which is, and they said.
If they rejected it, then we would.
Spend up to five hundred, which makes sense, but I think we heard a lot of people say also that if there was a way for us to make that a little bit less, even if we said we're gonna do four, borrow four hundred thousand. We would still be paying for it for the next.
Twenty years.
Twenty years, you know, it's, so I guess if we have time before the applications do to just see what the difference over time might be, there's no harm in taking, if it doesn't take a lot of time to say this is the difference.
No, I can ask the bond bank, um because the last estimate I got, interest rate was estimated at four point six one, which is.
Good, good days.
Could, could be higher at this point, um and so I could certainly say, can you run five hundred, can you run four hundred, and we can, we can look at that.
You have your hand up.
Well, did you take, I'm gonna call this, 'cause I always have, did you take some of the sludge fund money to set aside for the pedestrian bridge?
Yep.
A hundred thousand.
It's already factored into that.
Right, but you just gotta grant for two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we need it all.
Yeah, we still need it all.
For a bridge.
Were you, some of that money is matched, isn't it?
It was, that, the amount that we took from the um.
Fund balance.
Fund balance is, was to match the USDA grant.
All, all I'm saying is that if we could get that grant. If we're not, if we're not submitting an application till May.
Well, I mean, I'm working on it now, but if you want to wait till the next meeting, that's fine, it's not due until May fifteenth.
I just, I don't see the harm in asking what the, the difference over time is for four hundred thousand versus five hundred thousand and then, right, is that crazy?
Yeah, look at it, I think.
The interest rate won't change, just the amount of interest, we see how much it is like. The interest rate won't change, just the amount of interest. We see how much it is like.
Yeah. And that's, and it's okay if people, I mean. It's, it's also okay if Kaylee and I are the only ones interested in looking at that.
Yeah.
As long as, as long as it doesn't need a lot of your time.
It's information, it's information. Information is good.
I think. Okay, somehow it's still ten of six.
For sure.
Um yeah, we're, we're moving back in time. Uh okay, so basically you're gonna come back. Opie, you're gonna come back to us at some point with a purchase and sale that's actually.
Correct.
Good to go, okay. And that's gonna be not this meeting, it's not tonight?
No.
Okay. And Casey's working the bond bank, she can come back to us with more info on the bond.
Yeah, I can have that for the next meeting.
Awesome. Okay. Uh do you think the purchase and sale will be ready for next meeting or do you think it'll be later?
Hmm, I hope it'll be ready for next meeting.
Okay, cool. Awesome. I'm gonna move us on. Uh item four, select board to appoint Elizabeth Dow and Rose Friedman to the committee working to make town meeting more accessible for the future. This is another thing came up at town meeting was um Rose was wondering if there's a way, like are there other things we can do? Are there things towns, other towns have done that might work here to get more participation for town meeting? I felt like our town meeting for those who showed up, people were very engaged, it was great. Um but.
It was the best town meeting I've ever been at.
I thought the participation was great and I went to a round bag lunch after and we talked about town meeting and when I heard what other people were saying about their attendance, I thought ours was stellar. Yeah, yeah, it was stellar.
Right, I mean, I feel like we have pretty good um discussion at town meeting generally and so I thought it was good, but if there are ways to get more people to come out, then I think we should consider that.
Well, and the word accessible reminded me that the um HCTV has a live feed from the townhouse. It does not from the school. That's the big difference between being able to have it there because people at home could watch it in real time.
We still couldn't hear them if they were saying aye or nay, but.
Uh the acoustics are a hell of a lot better.
No, I mean, if they were, if they were watching on TV.
No, but they would, they would be able to see it, you know, you don't get to actually watch town meeting until it's edited and dealt with and comes on, you know, I don't know how much later than the actual day. It's just nice to feel like you're still part of it. A lot of people come to town meeting and don't say anything. But they're there and they get to feel like they're part of it.
So Rose has said she can be a part of this?
And Wiz, you're willing?
Yeah.
This is great, I think.
I can motion, I can motion to appoint Wiz Dow, Elizabeth Dow and Rose Freeman to the committee for making town meeting more accessible.
Add hoc committee.
Add hoc committee.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Who have second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you guys for, for working on that and.
Do we report, historically, do we ever record number of attendance at that meeting?
I've never seen any numbers.
Tanya had that figure, um because we sort of do a rough count while we're sitting at that table and it's in her minutes, was it a hundred and?
Seventy something.
Hundred forty something, a hundred and forty something maybe?
Hundred and forty was the number I heard.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that. It was in her minutes.
But you were wondering, do we have that historically to know?
Historically, yeah.
Yeah, what participation has been in the past, like even the distant past would be interesting. Yeah.
It'd be difficult because you don't know how many people are eligible.
Right.
You know, you see, you can't, you can't do a comparison of, of percentage.
Some voters, you're saying, yeah.
They vote up there.
Right, but, yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Try to beat it for next year. We had a hundred and forty, we get a hundred and fifty.
All right, I'm moving us on. Item five, business manager sent Casey to present the third quarter FY twenty-four budget update, which was also in our packet.
Okay, so talking about revenues first, um so most of our revenues are on sap to meet the budget. We actually have several that are basically further along than we expected because we should be at seventy-five percent being that far into our fiscal year. Um same discussion as before, that the actual amount you're seeing is a billed amount. Um if we were to assume that we would collect what we expect, then our overall percentage currently would be seventy-five, seventy-seven percent, so about two percent ahead of schedule. Factors, so office revenues are running a little ahead of schedule, copier fees and zoning permits. Dog licenses, we probably surpassed that once because the deadline was April third and this was rem as of three thirty-one. Um and then of course we have some grant revenue that's, that's obviously really helping us. Um so we're about seventy-seven percent right now.
So we have, for tax revenue, we have fifty-four mil, or five point four million um that's come in. I think, I know that includes the school, some of that's school money?
Built, right. That's like a billed amount, like uncollected.
Oh, that's uncollected.
Because that number actually goes down as we collect. Because that's billed, that's like, that's uncollected right now.
But it says it's a hundred and seventy-five percent collected.
And then it goes to, trust me, yeah, it's, it's kind of a funky way, but yes, that's, that's un, really uncollected.
So we don't know until after May ten?
Correct.
Kind of said actually is.
Right, and so those tax revenues include property taxes, delinquent fees, school admin fee, so it's a few different things and obviously our delinquent fees come in mostly after May. Um and then we get our school admin fee for collecting the taxes and those sort of things. So this three million one oh four is what we expect to keep if everybody pays their taxes.
But the other numbers under the actual column, other than the tax revenue actual, the others are actually actuals?
Correct.
Okay.
It's, it's really like a bill, it's billed amount, uncollected amount is really what it is.
Okay. Great, thank you for that clarification.
You were mentioning it would be earlier that in police revenues, there are some new grants and that's what, no?
So.
Ticket revenue and fingerprints.
Um so police revenue in general is a, is a, is at a hundred and fifty-one percent. Ticket revenue itself is at a hundred and forty-four percent and then we have like outside services that are, which is like your fingerprints. Um and then we weren't expecting the um state highway safety office grants, formerly known as the governor's highway safety grants, so we've taken in another ten thousand or so in grant income, um so that's, that's for sure.
Do you agree? Want to agree? But ticket revenues are up and fingerprints.
And did we budget for fingerprints? Not last year.
Uh well, it goes under outs, um or does?
It's like a miscellaneous.
They put it under miscellaneous, okay.
It's a great service though for folks in the community to not have to go far away to, isn't it, to schools, yeah.
It, uh, you know, I just saw in the past, there's people coming in pretty much every day because now nurses needed.
Oh, really?
Yeah, anybody.
Anybody working with kids.
Everybody just get there for now.
Not me.
A machine. Of course, you never know.
Now that would be in private, though. They make you wear, tell you what you gotta wear for clothes and everything. I'm sure I'll cut out if you work for somebody.
Any other questions about revenue?
No.
Okay, so go down to expenses. Um so expenses, again, we'd expect to be about seventy-five percent. Um we're at eighty point five, um so five and a half percent over. All of our VLCT insurances, workers comp, passive unemployment, they're paid through June thirtieth. Our county taxes are paid. Office budget is about seven percent over and that's really um our insurance, conferences dues, advertising and especially computer services, which is gonna be increased significantly in the fiscal year twenty-four budget because we have a lot of things that um like our email, we now pay for. We didn't used to pay for our email and that's like a couple hundred dollars a month and we have VLCT, so we have a number of factors. So our IT, our computer services are significantly over.
I thought, I thought the email was included in the Google package.
It is, but we used to have G Suite, which was like free, so yeah, and now we have to pay for our emails.
They pulled a fast one off.
They found a way to charge to me.
They did.
They find a way to charge.
Yeah, there's, there's no, there's no free, free anymore for businesses.
And then they start squeezing.
Yeah.
Damn.
So that's a couple thousand dollars a year that we hadn't planned on, so anyway.
You didn't wanna be around the office when that came out. The, the email stuff.
When Google first started, its motto was don't be evil.
That's true.
It's not that, their motto anymore.
Changed, yeah.
Don't be poor, is what they're doing.
It's not a bad thing to pay for computer services because there's the saying, um if you don't pay for the product, you are the product.
Right, yeah. Well, I mean, Google's places, it's both.
Very true.
It's both.
Yeah.
So Casey, this is a little bit of an abstract question, but so it seems like since we were coming into our last quarter that we're going to be over budget, do you feel like in those exp, in some of those expenses that we've captured those in the budget we just passed pretty much?
Yes, so a lot of, because some, a lot of the stuff we knew was in the pipeline, so we budgeted for increased computer services, diesel, fuel, VLCT insurance, yes, we have definitely factored that in.
Uh fuel and uh insurance were big ones, the, the price of diesel, the price of fuel oil.
Salt too.
So highway is currently about seven percent over and that's basically salt, diesel fuel and equipment expense. Equipment expense it's ten thousand dollars over currently. Um blame that on the F five fifty, but yeah.
That we ordered, ordered a new one a year and a half ago?
Yeah, a while, no, it's eight months, six, eight months ago, maybe last summer?
That we were supposed to have.
Oh, okay, so.
Over November?
Six months ago, yeah. We have ordered it, but unfortunately we had to keep the one we have going. So yeah, um fire department, a little bit ahead of schedule, but not, it's not crazy. Um and then, so ultimately five and a half percent over on our expenses, about two percent over in revenues, so the net effect is about three and a half percent over. I honestly don't think that's horrible considering some of these outside factors we dealt with, like with fuel, oil and diesel fuel, basically we did double what they were in our last budget.
And also, we won't see those continuing into the next quarter so much because we won't be heating as much.
And the salt, we're done with salt. I have one more invoice that I just paid today that, we'll go into that, but that, that's it, no more salt, right?
And.
Mother nature.
No, no, salt.
I know several things that are already a hundred percent.
Rescue squad, we've dispersed, county taxes, we've dispersed, right?
Because they've already been paid.
And all of our insurances have been paid, so that's what, so like it's.
They won't change, so by the end of the year, it won't.
We can come back.
Yeah, we'll be close to, we'll be close to budget.
That's what I'm saying, it's not like, oh my god, it's, it's okay, we're, we're probably gonna be a little bit over, but it's, it's not horrible, it could be a lot worse.
No big deal, we'll just take it out of the sludge.
We did, all right. For the last budget.
So, um, okay, so any other questions about this?
Thank you for putting it together and thank you for summarizing it in this format. It's, uh, I mean, I looked through the detailed one too, but this is, this is nice for, for having a conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, great. Next is item six, let board to discuss Lemoyle Valley Ford purchasing town property for parking and EV chargers. I thought we were gonna have more info on this.
Yeah.
Do we not?
Um I did get a call late in the day um with some news that um Rick Welcome got from his engineer that uh there might not be enough room to even pull off this project, so.
Oh.
Yeah. I don't know.
Okay.
Item thing. Next item.
Yeah, we can table this.
Table it for now?
Um yeah.
Till we have more info?
Right.
Okay.
And he, he's on his way back from Boston today, so he might come in, he might be swinging in.
All right. Uh next is item seven, select board to consider approving a water connection application for batch of their property on Lemoyle Avenue. We have an application in our packet.
I didn't put it in the packet.
Well, sorry, online.
Yeah.
I read it online.
Just the water connection?
Just water. So why is it not sewer? That was my question.
So this is the property that we had a discussion about having it be more than three hundred feet away from sewer main.
Yeah, oh, for sewer?
Yeah, so Patrick Larson.
That was for both?
No, no.
The house is gonna be different distances for water and for sewer?
No, there's, there's no three hundred foot rule in our water ordinance.
Oh, but there is in our sewer.
Right.
I see, okay. So they're just doing the water connection and they're putting in a septic system?
Correct.
But are they three hundred feet from the sewer connection?
Well, there was some, there was some interpretation of the ordinance and where it was measured from was up for debate.
So who's, what do you mean when you say interpretation of the ordinance?
I would assume that you'd measure the, as the crow flies.
Straight line.
The closest point, the closest point from the sewer main.
Yep.
To the residence.
Yes.
And the other one was measured from the sewer main along the right of way up to the property.
No.
But isn't that where it has to go?
That's the length of it, yeah.
Well, Patrick.
But doesn't it have to go into the, on the right of way or not?
Well, if it went across another property, there'd have to be easements.
Yeah, that.
So it's gotta go right the right of way.
So it's not a right of way, any?
No, it's not.
No, no, so it's up there, it's up there.
And it's that way is more than three hundred feet.
But that's the way the pipe would have to go, right?
No.
Not necessarily.
It would have to, otherwise it would cross somebody else's property.
That would be up to a designer and to determine where the pipe would go. Um I'm, I'm kinda stumped on this one and.
It's too bad people don't do what they agreed to do.
Well, that's, I also think that we were very vague by telling them.
Yep.
That just move the house three hundred feet away.
Yep.
And the problem wouldn't be a problem, but I'm I don't know really where to go on this one. We can, we tossed around a couple of ideas.
So can, just to clarify.
Yeah.
If you measured from the proposed house, shortest distance to the sewer main, it's less, it's within that.
Two hundred and four feet.
Within that three hundred feet.
Correct.
But if you measure up the right of way.
Correct.
Then it becomes longer than three hundred feet. But it seems to me.
And then there's the.
They'd have to go up the right of way because if they don't, then they have to get an easement or something to dig up somebody else's property.
Correct.
Which I, I don't know why we require.
They're gonna have to get an easement no matter what.
Oh, really?
Which of the way. If they wanna connect into her, you're talking about down to the.
Where the manhole is.
Yeah, so either way, they're gonna have to get an easement.
From that prop, from the.
They can't just go down the right of way?
Because it's not our right of way. You gotta remember, we ain't got nothing involved in this. This is the property's owner's right of way.
Yeah.
Or, or zero, and right of way up through there.
Yeah.
But there's, but we already have a utility easement for water through there.
For water, yes.
Because it goes up to the cemetery. So there's, there's a water line close to the house.
Oh, so water's closer.
Water's closer.
So that's why they want the water.
So we definitely, there's no reason not to approve the water that's in front of us now.
Correct.
Well, except for except for this is our only, you know, the bottom line is we were loosey goosey, tried to help people out and they did play fair and now this is our only opportunity to say, hey, you know. I've been disappointed that I thought definitely we were too loosey goosey. But it's disappointing that people take advantage of situations.
It's, it's the interpretation in their favor of the ordinance.
Yeah, well, that's what interpretations are like, you know, a lot, everybody's got one.
Right.
I guess I'm still unclear about.
But for tonight, we can't, I mean, that's, we already had that conversation about sewer and they're not asking for sewer, they're asking for water, so we can either approve that or not.
But Danny's saying.
But we could also talk about.
Hold the water hostage if you thought that.
Well, otherwise what is a penalty from just, maybe I shouldn't be involved in this question because I'm the one that had no con to sewer. And if I would have done that interpretation, I would, my daughter would have a leach field instead of instead of paying sewer.
Because their interpretation, they're not gonna come here and ask for sewer main.
Because their, because their access is three hundred feet away. Because their, because their access is three hundred feet away from the main.
Cause they, they think it is, well, I thought it was too, and when I applied for Emily's water and sewer, yeah.
It wasn't?
So, well, if we'd have went up the road, it would, it would have been way, it would have been nine hundred. But, so it does, it is what it is, I mean, it's just disappointing that people.
No, you're right, the whole point of having an ordinance is that so we treat everybody fairly.
And we don't have to make one-off decisions, you just.
Yeah, but I don't, I also agree with Obie that, and I'm, I'm to blame, I'll take the bullet on this one because I was more than willing to just move your house a few feet if that's the issue. And they were like, oh yeah, we can do that, yeah, good job, hey, have a nice night, here we are.
So are they gonna put a leach field?
Yes, it's, they have at least one permit.
From the state?
But I don't know if it's, I mean, I'm not trying to start problems, but I don't know if it's a leach field period or not.
It's a different thing than this.
Yeah, well, I don't know, I'd say.
So what's your pleasure, do we have a motion to approve the water connection or not?
I'm likely approve the water connection.
Do we have a second?
I can second that.
Any other discussion about the water connection or the related, no app, no, no request for sewer?
Yeah, I think we just live and, we live and learn on that one, we do better next time.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries, thank you.
The other thing we gotta start looking out for too on the water part is these houses, they're getting out farther, we gotta make sure they have adequate pressure, more than thirty-two pounds, if not, that falls back to us, where we gotta add another booster station or add this, so overall it's gonna start costing more.
The farther we go.
Yep.
Well, mostly the farther up we go, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
The higher elevation on the house.
I mean, that was probably alright for that reservoir up there, that whole.
Well, they don't run off the reservoir, Danny, that reservoir out there don't do nothing for them.
No, that feeds, it feeds the.
There's a booster station for that area?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, we got.
Right by the road?
We got six tanks in there right now.
Yeah.
And they run about ninety psi over there.
Wow. That must be nice.
Do we need to articulate this ordinance more carefully to, to look at it and?
It's something, yeah, we're taking a look at and trying to, I've read it.
Yeah, well, we should have just followed.
Several dozen times out loud in my head, upside down, side by side.
Yeah.
Can't hold your tongue.
Or maybe we should just stick to our guns next time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you're three hundred feet.
Which is, no, give me a, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm moving us on.
San told you so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I said I.
I watched the video too of the meeting.
Hang on, okay, so let's, let's move to, uh, item eight, which is, um, to consider an application for Central Vermont Solid Waste, uh, um.
Eleven out of seven on our paper here.
Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District.
That was item seven, that we just voted on.
District, yes.
Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District.
Oh, yeah, it is, sorry.
So it's the MSP grant, um, they do, they have two grant periods a, a year. This, this grant period, the deadline for application is April twenty-ninth, um, and it's a, up to five thousand dollar grant that Tracy and I had a.
Hey, Tom.
Had a Zoom call with, um, Theron, who's the acting executive director of the Solid Waste District and runs a grant program, anyway, so my idea, and I passed it by Tracy and Obie, was to finally have Hardwick apply for one of these, we've never applied for one before, but, um, for some assistance with the cost of the trash and recycling receptacles that were needed at the pause place and the two trailheads. And, you know, why not try to get a five thousand dollar grant, cause the recycling and trash things that we're looking at are, you know, industrial grade, um, cause they're gonna be at those trailheads that are not gonna have a lot of.
Yep.
Anyway, and they're expensive.
Okay.
So, that's what we were gonna try to apply for.
Comments from the staff?
Um, I think just as part of the grant agreement, we have to commit to maintaining them and arrange for them to be emptied on a regular basis.
Yeah, cause they don't give the money to a town that is not gonna speak, you know, show that it's sustainable what they're purchasing.
So it's one set at the depot and then one up in East Hardwick at the intersection of Stevens Lane and L B R T.
And the grant would pretty, is it a, is there a match or does that cover the cost or?
I wasn't, I'm not aware of a match, I don't know if the answer to that.
This is just, uh, to take a look at the application and to do it, I don't remember how much they cost each, Tracy started to gather that information, but we didn't wanna work on it further without the go-ahead, it was left for.
I think it makes sense, I don't know what other people think, I mean, if we're gonna put trap, I mean, there's gonna be trash.
Yes.
It's gonna be trash.
So we may as well make a place for people to put it.
Yeah.
We also have some, uh, funds available in our interest.
Capital, in capital general fund, there's some crude interest over the last few years, um, well, like fifteen thousand.
Wait, so four, four trash receptacles, so it's gonna cost more than five thousand bucks?
No, but, um, there's a lot of things to get, there's.
We're not in business.
I know.
So the interest money is hopefully gonna be helpful for the paving or whatever we do with ledge or.
Yeah.
Marking and signage for the.
Okay, so I'm gonna bring this back to, um, let's bring this back to the, the topic at hand, which is.
Solid Waste District's only gonna help us with things that are related to solid waste and recycling.
So, so, so all we need, you're looking for, somebody's looking for a, a nod from the select board to have Tracy go ahead and pursue this, is that what we're looking for?
We don't need to vote right now.
So.
Right.
Great.
Does anybody have any objection to Tracy going ahead and looking into this and following up? Okay, let's do it.
Do it.
Um, next, item nine is, uh, I've got revised price for Caspian Avenue property.
Um, we're gonna propose sell the property for ten thousand, what were the price of ten thousand? There's some issues with the deed, uh, two attorneys have looked at it, they're not crazy issues, but they're not, they're cloudy issues with the deed, um, though we're still covering our costs, but we're right there.
And we're so confident that we're getting the place cleaned up?
Yes, I'm not concerned about, Dean came to me like, hey, you know, I went to another attorney, I went to another attorney down here in Green, I think Green, is that Green, David, Green?
Green, yeah.
He said the same thing, there's some issues back in the.
He actually found more.
Yeah, he actually found more issues, so it is cloudy, it's not the end of the world, but, you know, it's not really worth taking care of if all you're gonna do is clean it up and make it lawn like Dean wants to do, so, um, can, you know, Dean asked if we could renegotiate and, uh, then he made the offer of ten, ten, you know.
And that covers what we had into it?
And I think we got around to about eighty-five hundred, it was in our packet, right?
Yeah, well, not in your packet, I put it in the folder just this afternoon, about eight, eight, and, and we don't know exactly, I estimated the rest of our legal, so eighty-five hundred somewhere around there.
I would make the motion that we sell it for what's owed on it, and that way we're not getting ourselves in a pickle about making money on property or anything like that, and handle it as a tax sale, you know, extended tax sale and in the agreement, we make sure that it's written somewhere that we clean up, it, it's gotta be cleaned up, just cover our.
I think, I think, um, it sounds, I mean, the thing is, we're gonna be incurring legal costs as we go forward.
Well, there were some of those estimated, yeah, it'd be whatever the cost, I would sell it.
It sounds like ten thousand though is a reasonable estimate of, like, it's just, like, it gives us a little bit of room, but it's close to what we owe, or you're saying, let's calculate exactly?
I mean, I'm not, I don't think any of us care about that, but I was just thinking it's, it, it.
It's close to what we have into it.
Right, we sell for what, what the cost and what.
And it's gonna get cleaned up, which is the big, the big thing.
It has to get cleaned up.
Well, the only pro, there's a, the only problem with that is, first of all, we have to do, uh, revised notice of proposed sale and post it, um, so like, I don't know how.
And that's thirty days on that, right?
Post it, like, and say, okay, it's gonna, like, and then you have to amend.
The ten thousand.
Yeah.
Let's just make it ten grand.
Phone calls for Casey's time for.
Yep, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, as long as, as long as, you know, our.
We're right there.
Right, as long as our reasoning for the price is to cover our costs, then that's fine.
We're not flipping it.
We're not flipping promises.
So are you changing your motion?
Yes.
But it's gonna get cleaned up.
Yes.
It's gonna get cleaned up.
Yeah.
Right.
I'll second it.
I can second, or change it.
So, sorry, so the motion is to, uh, sell the property or to initiate the process of selling the property or sell the property for ten thousand dollars, uh, with a condition that gets cleaned up.
Correct.
Yes, that's the motion, very well, I speak, I speak really good sometimes.
And so that process, so, okay, so sorry, we have a motion, we have a second, um, so let's get through the, uh, any other discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, yeah, any opposed? So motion carries, so the process on that though is we post it, it needs to be posted, we need thirty days.
Be warned.
Yeah.
We pass that down, I need a written sign, it's a revised notice of sale that will be posted in our official paper of record saying that the price is not ten thousand.
Yep.
You have it already.
Wow, here you go, awesome.
Are you, that was a good point, Danny, or, um, we're just gonna let Dean, we're just gonna let Dean know, like tomorrow or.
That's his government over here.
Yeah, I'll be sure to let him know.
Great.
They, and they're aware of everything that's going on.
Yeah.
Um, great.
Which I was happy about.
Any, uh, so that's the end of our items, correct, for adjusted?
Oh, yeah, it was.
So, select board reports?
I am excited to report that the screening that happened last Friday night at the Farm Boy, the George Woodard film at the townhouse, had one hundred and sixty-eight people.
So now we know.
For the three hour movie.
Now, now we know how to get more people at town meeting, we'll show a movie.
How many people does the townhouse hold, sir? I don't know.
Um, right now, the balcony is closed, so on the house floor, two hundred and fifty.
Really?
And upstairs, when it's open, it's more?
Will be eighty or so more. So, um, that was great, um, the next week, Hardwick Elementary, I think third grade, is gonna have a puppet show for sixty-five kids and no strings, marionettes, something or they're coming to, it's a closed thing, it's a school thing, but, so, two weeks in a row, woo-hoo.
Great. Um, Casey, I know you're taking minutes and everything, but would, I sent you an email with a web link, would it be possible for you to bring it up?
Yeah, I saw it on my phone already, so.
Yeah, I thought you'd probably see it and be like, oh geez.
No, it's fine.
Well, she's working on that, do you want?
Go ahead.
Um, it was a fluky thing, and Obie might have more to add, but we did have a, Tracy and I ended up on a call with Allison Lowe and, um, Krista.
Could you shoot?
Shoot.
Send that, that's good.
Um, they're, well, it was just a, kind of a good thing to.
Yeah.
Know that they're working on the broadband, N D K broadband is working on a grant application that is gonna include Hardwick hopefully.
For three months.
From N B R C.
Five, five hundred and that. It's coming.
West Hill.
Coming everywhere, coming everywhere.
To include the work.
If that doesn't work, can you just click on the N V D A link below?
What about this five G killing us all or something?
We're still waiting to see.
Yeah, we're still, yeah.
Hang on, it's gonna be twice as far.
Yeah, so this is my update, can we start at the top?
Yeah, where do you want this?
Well, wait where you were, uh, we'll just scroll down through, so this is from, I think, the nineteen fifties, that photo?
Car looks newer than that.
Okay, maybe it's newer, so this picture, uh, the next one is an artist, well, an architect's rendering and the perspective is sort of standing in front of La Moya Valley Ford looking across the road and.
I'm gonna try to make it a little bigger.
Oh, thank you. Uh, and so in this picture, the new building looks smaller, it, it's, the new building footprint is like four to five times the size of the footprint of the yellow barn, so just, it's only, and it's only a little bit shorter than the barn. But that's sort of the idea, so there's gonna be just, the barn gets fixed up and there's that one entrance there in between the two, and it keeps scrolling down, I don't know if there's more, sort of an aerial, uh, I don't know, can you get, can you go up? Oh, up, yeah, that one, the one that keeps disappearing.
Okay.
So that's sort of the aerial sketch of the, the barn, and then it, so that the new, yeah, so this gives a better idea of the scale.
Yeah.
That's the old design.
Oh, that's the old design, so it's a little bit smaller, but it's not a lot smaller, can you scroll down a little more? I tried to get, I sent a link to the plans, but the plans are huge. Yeah, so that gives, um, and that gives, so this one shows you where the rail trail is, um, and the barn, so in the barn is gonna be, uh, the entire inside of the barn is gonna be a Cabot, uh, retail store, but there will be.
Visitor center type.
There will be some visitor center type components, but there will also be, um, uh, kiosks that are, that feature other local products, so there, it's not gonna be all Cabot.
By chance, did you send us all that link?
I should have, and I will.
It's on our website.
But it's, it's a pain to find, so I'll send it around to everybody.
I can send it out.
I'm one of five.
I'll send it back to them.
Go to the website, it's not the answer I wanted.
This is something of a tangent, but I see Peg Marcy's house across the road, do you know what happened to it? Did, did the yellow barn people buy it or?
They did not.
No, they did not.
They, uh, there was an effort that wasn't.
No, it wasn't.
That used to be a beautiful old house inside, in the day, I spread to the.
So, let me just also say that the new accelerator building is gonna be split roughly fifty-fifty between Jasper Hill and, um, and the Center for Agricultural Economy, uh, Center for Ag is gonna be, uh, doing their, um, Just Cut Program, which is a bunch of veggies, uh, that they need to store, um, and then ship out, uh, and Jasper Hill is gonna be.
It's Farm Connects.
Oh, it's Farm Connects, it's gonna be in there?
Yeah.
That's right, sorry, so it's aggregating local farm, um, produce.
It's a distribution center.
And then distributing out there.
Our local food, and it's food, food security in the area too.
Partially, yep, yep.
Speaking of which.
Yes.
Do you mind putting that, like, in the minutes?
I'll put the link in the minutes.
This is gonna be.
Or just for, like, it might be nice for people if they're reading the minutes to.
If the link is in there.
Yeah, I'll just put that here.
Thank you.
So the other, um, so product, the other thing, the, the yellow barn, the part that's not as dark yellow on, towards the rail trail, is a patio type thing.
With a deck.
Open to the public, I think it's more like concrete than deck.
It looks like a loading dock.
And, and it's a loading dock, it doubles as a loading dock, you got it.
On the far end, it's a loading dock.
Slash a food truck.
The wide part is.
Okay.
And, um, I think if, if you got close and counted, I think you'd find there are only about twenty-two or twenty-four parking spots total, which is why we're talking about, um, creating some parking in front of the, uh.
Where is the employee, I mean, that's not even enough for an employee park.
So through this whole time, we said there's gotta be some improved gravel parking down by the trailhead that could be used, there's gotta be some parking in front of the, um, the sewer plant. And the, so that if, if the La Moya Valley Ford thing falls through in front of the sewer plant, we'll have to try to do something, some sort of gravel parking lot in front there by other shops.
That's, it is.
Squirrel, squirrel, squirrel.
So that's a, you know, that's, that's, that I had put into perspective, cause they talked about thirty, forty jobs.
Twenty-five new jobs, yeah.
So the hard box wall of the visitor center is full of staff parking.
So we need to, yeah, and Center for Ag.
I mean, that's not, that's not, not good. I mean, that's not, that's not, not good.
No, I agree. So that's why we need, so the parking, see, like, right across the rail, directly across the rail trail is the, um. The wastewater plant and the parking right in front of that.
Be down, yeah.
Would be ideal.
So we don't, yeah, that's, well, what are we gonna do? I mean, that puts, that would be a factor for the Lemoyle Valley Ford project. That would change my mind. Cause where.
Why would it change your?
Well, we're gonna park.
Well, if Lemoyle Valley Ford does it, then that, they're gonna create parking, but if they don't.
If they're gonna create public parking is the idea, not employee parking.
Right.
For the yellow barn, that's the difference.
Right, right.
Especially if I was Rick Welkman, that'd be a huge difference.
Yeah, and then.
Take twenty five of my spot, or, you know, twenty five of the, the public spots.
Of the twenty, twenty public spots. Right, so we've got, we got, we shortly will have, well, shortly. It's gonna be eighteen months, roughly.
Well, it's not gonna go away.
It's not gonna go away. Something we need to work on.
When do you break ground?
Uh, we're hoping to break, break ground in May, so we have a, a new Marcus Tax Credit closing. It's gotta happen before May fourth.
Well, if you're doing the gravel, Danny, you can just add a few more.
Yeah, so then we're gonna, um.
I mean, I can't believe we're spending all this money at Hardwick and we're creating more parking problems.
Well, okay.
Make a lick of sense.
So.
Well, some of those folks that work there might not drive there.
Okay.
Just saying.
They might drive. Jesus.
Yep, so. So, what I meant to bring up was not necessarily to park, point out the weeks, I mean, I do want everybody to know. But I didn't really wanna focus. What I wanted to focus on is that we are breaking ground in May. We just signed the. Uh, we've signed the construction contract like yesterday, today, uh, with Wright and Morrissey. Um, and everything is proceeding at pace and, uh, yeah, it's gonna be an exciting new project in Hardwick.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, let's wait until we actually have.
My plan, my plan is to have parking on both sides of Route fifty and a little slow traffic down coming into the.
Yeah, there you go.
All the people will be walking in the road.
Yeah.
The speed bumps with the dead bodies.
Oh, people, come on, we gotta have a real solution here. This is.
Yes, you're, you're absolutely right.
It's covered.
Yep, okay.
I have no fear.
I want, that's my deal. I wanted to show the architectural drawings, but they, they didn't wanna come up.
You just got me excited about the project and then.
So I'm gonna send to everybody the link, cause I didn't send it to everybody.
I already sent it.
Okay, and I also, but also try to put those architectural plans, you know, they're, they're huge, so.
Question is, is there room in the budget for a statue of you outside of the.
I hope not.
Like a power stand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It should be.
Yeah. I, all right, the same that Eric has been doing.
It's incredible.
Tremendous amount of work on this project. I appreciate every minute of it.
And it's not, it's not, it's not Walmart, it's not Walmart greeter work either.
Yeah.
This is, it's legit.
It's.
Big projects work.
Serious, serious shit, yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Yeah, we'll work for me building another park.
That's right.
I just had a couple of old business, maybe for the next meeting. We don't have to talk about it tonight, but I'd love to get an update on the cannabis, cannabis commission. If like, what's going on with that? We had like talked, we had appointed a couple of people to the cannabis commission.
Cannabis, yeah.
But then didn't really hear about it. We only ever talk about it if there's an application. I was just curious about that. And then we haven't heard about the community center at a meeting in a while, so an update on that would be awesome. And then we, um.
Community center?
Uh, Jesse and a few people, like, there have been a few meetings where we've got updates, so it'd be great, especially, um.
I agree.
Uh, just an update would be great. And then, um, an update on where we're at with the, um, we had applied for some money to do a feasibility for the town garage. Moving the town garage.
Oh, we didn't get that grant.
We did not get that grant. Okay, so then.
Find another pot of funds.
Yeah, so maybe we can talk about that at our next meeting or do like a, like how we're gonna.
Tracy, you on that?
Yep, we're all over it.
Cool.
Okay, great. Awesome.
Yeah.
More reports, old business, new business?
A lot going on.
So the, uh, application was submitted. I sent it, I sent a copy to everybody of the Paul Bruin Preservation Trust. Um, for the townhouse.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Aggress accessibility and the main building roof.
That's great.
So, end of the month, cross your fingers.
If that, if that's successful.
Give us a go to, to.
Funds the project?
Go out to bid.
Really? That'd be awesome. That'd be really awesome. Mike Henry.
I promise next time I'll be shorter. I forgot one thing. Uh, our town ordinances are a little insufficient for.
Traffic.
Traffic ordinance, excuse me, excuse me. Um, so the way I have drafted these up, I've only got started on part of them. But I'm gonna draft them into three standalone documents. One will be, uh, uh, speed enforcement. The other one will be sign enforcement, and third will be parking. Uh, this is the draft. Uh, ordinance for the speed.
Oh, boy. Can you circulate electronically?
Yes, I can. I can. Uh, and again, this is the draft. If everybody could just, uh, look at it, see if, if it's up to your standards. Then what I would like to do is send this just to the, uh, my, uh, league's city towns, just to get their standard approval on it.